Call the meeting to order. First item on agenda is consider approval of April 1 regular session minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Public hearing, we have a public hearing to consider abandoning the city's interest in an unopened portion of Spalding Street. This is a small section of Spalding Street right behind the Waddell Center, between the Waddell Center Ball Field and 2427. It adjoins the property that the hotel is planning to be built and we're looking to close that section of the street. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Lauder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve resolution 1905.
I have another public hearing, 1905, excuse me.
Yes.
Motion to approve 1905.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have another public hearing, consider ordinance 1913. It's a map amendment for portions of tax record 28-537, 28-558, from R8 and R10 to GHBD. This is the property we just spoke of and part of the hotel property. They're doing a recombination plat and we're needing to change all of the general highway business district. Staff, want to make any comments?
I can go through the staff analysis if you prefer.
Anyone care to speak for or against?
Move the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Move pass ordinance 1913 map amendment.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to pass ordinance 1913.
Do you have a consistency statement in mind?
I will, hold on. Strike that, hang tight one second. Do you want that?
I'll need you to read that into the record.
Don't you love, does anybody else want to do this? The consistency statement versus the zoning amendment statement.
Right, zoning amendment statement is just for planning board, consistency statement is for council.
Consistency statement to be included in ordinance like this ordinance, the Alamo City Council finds the action to amend portions of land on the city zoning map, tax records 28-537 and 28-558, and portion of Spalding Street right away from zone R8/2 family residential district and R10/single-family residential district to GHBD/General Highway Business District to be consistent with the adopted 2028 land use plan. The 2028 land use plan calls for neighborhood residential/commercial uses on the parcels of interest. The portions of land are adjacent to existing commercial property have proximity to a major thoroughfare, the city's GHBD zone will assist the parcels of each reach their intended goal of onsite neighborhood residential/commercial by promoting interconnected commercial development, therefore being reasonable and in the public interest.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, we also need to go back and approve the ordinance before this, we did the resolution, we needed ordinance, I believe it was number 1912, for abandoning the Spalding Street by the way. Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under announced delegations, Ms. Carmen Rivers, 820 Mill Street, to request a peddler license. Ms. Rivers? Come forward, please. Go right over to the microphone.
When you're the first one up in the night time, you don't have anybody to follow. You're leading now.
What you want to do, Ms. Rivers, tell us what you want to do.
All right. I want to sell lemonade in the city of Alamo. My family sells in Union County, also South Carolina, love lemonade. But I also have a son that's born legally blind, so in remembrance of him, I want to give him and my other children a leadership of being entrepreneurs. I also have a niece that was born legally blind and she's met George Foreman, she's been through college, and I just want to let my son see that he can do anything. So, that's one of my main purposes.
Have you talked to the health department already?
I have.
And you've got that worked out with them?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the peddler license.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Number six, consider a fee waiver for the Stanley YMCA Baden triathlon.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the waiver.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number seven, consider a fee waiver in street closures for dinner on main event.
Move approval.
Do we have anybody here? You want to, the location has changed a little bit this year, you aware of that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Everybody's aware that the location has changed?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight, Nancy Hatley, Stanley County Schools, to provide an update on the virtual education activities.
I'm not going to use virtual.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the time to speak to you tonight and to introduce you to SCOV.
Speak into that, would you speak into that?
Sorry.
There we go.
Just a moment. Sorry, yours is a little different from what I'm used to.
Technology 101, right?
I know, this is a little different.
This is virtual education.
I know, right? I should be able to operate this.
We got you.
Makes me feel, that makes me feel good, though.
Yeah, just a present, but.
I know.
See, I'm not the only one.
So, it's not doing, okay, so it's trying to do your notes?
Our virtual.
What's that name?
It could be, but I don't need the notes, come here.
I've got a clicker, Nicole. Oh, wait, let's close this down, so, may have been trying to, it is not. If you want to, I'm not sure why it's, yeah, it's not wanting you to do that, if you want to go through and.
Just one at a time, I can do that, that's fine, sure.
I'm not sure why it's not.
Okay. Sorry about that. Again, good evening and thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. My name is Nancy Hatley, I am the Director of SCOV, which is a part of Stanley County Schools. SCOV is Stanley County Virtual Education. It is the newest school addition to Stanley County Schools, we began this past August, and it is a K-12 school designed primarily to support home schools. Perhaps a home educator is having difficulty teaching the challenging curriculum of high school, or maybe they have a student who is involved in competitive sports and it makes it difficult for them to attend traditional school, or maybe they want to participate in some courses that they cannot teach in the home setting, such as masonry or cosmetology or graphic design if they don't have the tools for those things. Excuse me. Well, SCOV can offer a flexible schedule that can provide the needs of home schoolers. So, how large of a need is there out there? How many home schools are registered in Stanley County? And have you already seen this presentation prior to this evening?
No.
Okay, so get that figure in your head. How many home schools and home school students do you think there are in Stanley County?
1,000 students.
Oh, wow. Y'all are the first group I've talked to that's actually given me a number, and you're pretty close, actually. There are, in the 2017-18 school year, there were 703 home schools and an estimated 1,089 students. You should go on Price is Right.
No, I just know how it's not changed in 20 years.
And if we look at our private school enrollment, there are six private schools with an estimated 419 enrollments, again, for last school year. So this number, that 1,089 students, it represents 13% of Stanley County Schools' total district population and 150% of our largest high schools' population, so one and a half times the number of students at West Stanley High School. So how can SCOV help? SCOV is designed to meet the individual academic needs of students whose parents prefer to homeschool and/or private school their child, utilizing our courses, either seated or virtual, that one may have difficulty teaching in the home setting. We offer courses through our Stanley County online courses, and those are taught through a learning management platform called Canvas. We also utilize North Carolina Virtual Public School and the Community Colleges CCP program, as well as a vendor called Edgenuity. So here are some scenarios of how we customize schedules using SCOV. We can provide all seated classes, these are traditional courses in other schools, and some of the Career and College Promise courses through Stanley Community College. The seated courses are based on the school of residency, so if you live in the Alamo District and your school of residency is Central Elementary, if you were to go for a seated course there, that's where you would go, is to Central Elementary. All virtual, we can offer all virtual courses through Stanley County online, North Carolina Virtual Public School, CCP courses through the Community College, as well as through Edgenuity. Or students can take a blended course load, and again, that's a combination of the traditional seated courses with online courses. So let's look at scenario one, all seated. We offer all the core classes and electives that are traditional schools, students have access to. So you have your math, English, your electives, arts, humanities, world languages, all of those are available. And here are some examples of students currently in SCOV and their schedules. So I have a student taking electronics and earth environmental science seated, another which AROTC and Math 3 seated, and another with automotive service and food seated. And seated courses are really good for the students who prefer face-to-face courses, but they're also a necessity for some courses that can only be taught in a face-to-face Scenario two is all online. Again, we can offer all the core classes, where we have some limitations are with the arts and CTE courses, because many of the CTE courses are face-to-face by nature. And there's also some limited health and PE courses, but they are available. So here are some examples of students with all online courses, reading, English Language Arts and math, the four core classes, Spanish, chemistry, Math 3, civics and economics, all online, and all Career and College Promise courses through the Community College, and we provide the textbooks. Courses that are online follow a set academic calendar, but students can access these courses day and night, weekends, whenever they need to, to work on their class. They communicate with teachers via text, virtual study halls, email, and so forth. Scenario three is blended, again, blending the traditional seated classes with the online, and again, we can offer the full range of core classes and electives and some examples of actual schedules that we have, science seated with English Language Arts and French 1 online, Math 1 seated with English 2, civics and Spanish online, JROTC and Math 3 seated with English 111 through the Community College, online, and all Career and College Promise courses, again, taking a mixture of seated and online courses through the Community College, and again, we provide the textbooks. If a student's never taken a seated class, taking a blend of virtual and seated is a good way for them to get acclimated to a classroom and prepare them for college. So depending on the grade level and course mode, as few as two courses meets enrollment This means that home educators can offer the courses they want to teach in the home setting and supplement with our courses. So what about extracurricular activities? Well, with at least three course enrollments, students can participate in sports and meet other eligibility requirements, they can participate in special events such as prom, dances, school-wide or grade-level field trips, and next year we're bringing that minimum down to two for special events. Clubs and organizations, Student Council, Spanish Club, Honor Society, Skills USA, and so on, again, we're going to take down that minimum to two courses for next school year. And this is Will, his mom provided a quote for us, and just in case you can't read that, I'm going to read it out. It says, "The SCOV program has been a wonderful fit for us. My son Will has had the opportunity to take classes at Stanley Community College that he has enjoyed and has stretched him academically. He has also had the chance to run cross-country and track at South Stanley High School, which has proven to be a great experience. We are very thankful to have this program in our county." Some other students and parents, one student or one parent said, "It's such a positive way to educate." A student said, "My online teachers are so communicative." And another parent said, "It's been a total win-win for us." So in summary, there are four takeaways I want to leave you with. One, SCOV is primarily for home schools. Two, we can customize the course load. Three, we have multiple course delivery options, and we can provide opportunities for extracurricular And the only thing I'm asking you to do is that if you know a home educator, a homeschooled or private schooled student, that you share the news about SCOV with them. Excuse me. And I thank you, and for more information, you can visit our website at stanleycountyschools.org and go to Schools and then SCOV, and my phone number is also listed there.
Tell me again how many classes a student has to take for you to qualify to get the state funding?
It depends on the course mode and the grade level, but the minimum is two, generally.
So that was my follow-through. So day 20, when you get the FTEs and those kinds of things, so if a student, if a normal, for instance, a normal high school, is that six, is that six a semester or is that five a semester? I've been so long, courses a semester.
They take four a semester.
Four a semester.
Is considered a full load.
So for a high school student, they would have to take?
Two.
Half.
Yes.
And for us, or you all, to get the FTE, the money?
Correct.
And it started, what, was it, did it start 1819 or did it start?
It started this school year in August, this past August.
So it just started. And so this doesn't, I know that a lot of home schoolers in this county and some in Montgomery County meet once a week at North Alamo Baptist Church on Mondays.
Yes, for a co-op.
Yeah, for their co-op.
Yes, ma'am.
This has nothing to do with that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So those two courses have to be seated?
No, they can be online, they can be seated, or they can be a blend, one can be seated, one can be online.
So to qualify for aid and funding, two, and they could be virtual?
Yes, they can be virtual.
Okay, how many, do you know how many students picked up?
That's what I was going to ask.
We've had a total of 24 over the course of the year, we currently have 16.
Out of the 1,089 home schoolers, out of the, out of the 1,089 out there?
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
And we've done that with limited marketing, limited advertisement, but we're starting to get the word out now, and that's why I'm here tonight. We're trying to reach out to the communities and get the word out.
Nancy, you remember 10 years ago or so when they did the virtual high school statewide, you know, when that first started? Is that, does that work with that, or is that?
Yes, that's with the North Carolina Virtual Public School, yes, and so we still utilize their courses as well for our high school, and some middle school courses, but mostly for high school courses.
Has anybody? Go ahead, Charlie.
What about the funding? At what point do you all get credit and money for these kinds of things?
Okay, well, they take a count of our average daily membership at the second, in the second school month, which is day 40, and that's used for lots of reporting purposes. But we get funding for those students, they look at our best count, best one of two for the first month or the second month, and they combine those numbers for each grade level to arrive at what they call our best average daily membership. And funding is based on that number, it's one of the numbers used for funding, and so they would look at it for the next year based on previous years and where you stand, and then they allocate per pupil. On most, on most programs, they allocate per pupil. Thank you.
Are you afraid of a trend, say like if the students start leaving traditional school, going to the home school format as the primary, you know, instead of waking up every morning and going to a traditional school? You know, the trend might reverse on you, you know?
Right, our goal is, and our intent is not to pull the students out of our traditional schools. This program is for students who have been homeschooled or private schooled, they've been doing that, and the parent understands what homeschooling is all about, because they're going into a partnership with the school system and they're continuing their home education at home in conjunction with the courses we're supplementing. For example, right now with our K-5, this, we hope to change this next year, but an example with our K-5 currently this year, we only offer reading and math. So all the other subjects that they need to do with those students are through the home school. So it's that partnership, and those parents have to be willing to remain in that partnership.
Out of the 1,089 students that you say are homeschooled, would you say the largest percentage of that is at the elementary school age or high school?
I'd have to look, it's been a while since I've looked at any figures that were broken down by grade level, I will have to look at that. And in past years when I have looked at that, it has been elementary that's higher, and typically, once they get into the more challenging high school curriculum, you'll see some students start to come back in. We see a lot with, oh, not Little Red, but.
Park Ridge.
Park Ridge, thank you. That when, they didn't have a high school, so they would come back into the public school at that time.
I, look at your numbers, 1,080-something, 400-and-something in private schools and that sort of thing, and I keep thinking, what if we could put those kids in the public schools? How much more opportunities the kids would have, course-wise, band, all of these other things? Have you ever done a comprehensive study to determine why those kids don't go to public schools?
I don't know that there's been a comprehensive study, but there are many reasons why parents choose to homeschool. Some of those are religious and some are not, and some do involve other activities, childcare reasons, just different factors, but I don't know if there's been a comprehensive study, I'll have to look at that and see.
I would think that'd be a valuable thing to have, to know why they don't, they don't go to public school. My grandkids are homeschooled, I still don't understand why, not here, not here in Georgia.
Right.
A follow-through on numbers, so when I made the comment, it hasn't changed very much. In 1995, there were just under 10,000 students in this county, in the county and city, the unified school system in 1995. And the reason I said I just guessed 1,000 is because right now, if you take out the folks that we know are at the private schools here and the home schools, we've got about 8,200 students in the county system. So what, we have not grown, we have not grown with student population in this county. Even if we had them all.
Right.
We still have about 10,000 students in this county, whether they're in the county school system or not, as I understand it.
Yes.
One last question, Ms. Hatley. With such a, such a concept as this, is it possible to utilize something like this, say like during inclement weather days, you know, so that the students don't have to come back at a later time and do makeup?
I would imagine it may evolve into that. We have a lot of virtual courses and virtual work going on, we've, we've been providing courses through Stanley County online for years now, I'm trying to remember exactly how many years, but it's, I know it's been over, over five years. And I think that, that would help us not have to make up so many hours when we have inclement weather. Right now, we are at the point that if we miss any more days, we have to make them up because we're at that threshold, we've, we've got to retain those hours. So yeah, that's definitely an option, I hear of other counties, other, other districts that utilize that. It would be a good use of the resources.
Further questions?
Yeah, I know you've done studies to see just how much money you make per student that comes back with this, in this program, from, from regular, just what the mother can do or the aunt or someone. How much are you awarded at Stanley County Schools or Alamo City Schools for each student?
Okay, so when we're allocated our funds, it's not exactly per each and every individual student, we have an allotted funding, so they use all the, the figures from prior years, from the algorithms, the best one of two, and looking at the number that they come up with and allocate those funds on our allotted average daily membership. But we could be up to 100 students over and may not get additional funding unless we request it. Conversely, we could be just under 100 students, less than the funding that we receive, and not have any funding, funding taken away from us. So we have that range of number of students, over and under, without additional or less funding. So it's not every single student that we bring back in, but when they look at our figures and see how many students that we've added to the system, that'll go into the calculations for the next year. Does that answer your question?
I just have one. Nancy, is this across the state, is this, is this kind of program offered in all the counties in the state of North Carolina?
I wouldn't say all of the counties in North Carolina, but it is growing. We have modeled our program after Aradale Statesville, that is a district in which Dr. James worked previously, and he brought that idea from there. But in talking with other districts, trying to research, you know, best practices, there are folks in Gaston, Charlotte Meck, Aradale Statesville I've already mentioned, Gaston, Carteret, Boncombe, every time I turn around, I'm hearing another county that is doing something like this.
Just one more, this might not be a fair question, but do you have a goal in mind, or do you know how many students, long-term, you'd need to pick up to make it viable?
Well, I was told the first year they went under 100 students, we, and then after we thought about it some more, we said, "We're starting small and we'll build up." I think definitely they would like to get around 100 or over, a little over 100. You get funding, once you hit that 100 mark, that helps offset some of the costs that we're incurring through this.
So you're getting information out to homeschool?
Yes, I've, I've been talking with some folks from the Stanley Montgomery Homeschool Association, they have a yearly meeting in August, I hope to get on their agenda to speak. I've also asked them to disseminate some information for me via Facebook or their, their email listserv, and we will be having some informational meetings coming up soon.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much.
Good luck to you. Number nine, Stacy Hale, Windstream, to discuss Windstream Services in Alamo.
We like handouts.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I know, it's Mr. Gig.
I know, it's Mr. Gig.
That's all right. So, it's, uh, it's a gig time.
All right.
As you know, over the last several months, we've been putting up a lot of fiber in Albemarle, overbuilding the city of Albemarle. We spent right at a million dollars to put fiber all over the streets of Albemarle, and we started selling it today. We had a person go around, kind of a soft, soft launch kind of thing. We sold six today. So, there's six people already signed up for gig service in Albemarle, so.
What is it?
It's, uh, I, I've got the, the 200 on there. If you look at that front page that I gave you, the 200 by 200, so everything that we're selling is symmetrical, so that means your download and your upload is the same. So, your 200 is $36, and that's just for the internet. Your 300 is, uh, uh, $46. Your 500 is $56, and your gig is $66 per month. And that's just for the internet. If you want voice with that, add 20 bucks, and you got voice. On the business side, what's that?
What do you mean by voice?
Like, do you want your, your, your home phone? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you want your landline, if your home phone. And the business rates, I've, I've included that in there as well, and those are internet prices. And if you want a, a business line with that, add 30 bucks for each business line to what you have in front of you. And we're, we're excited about it. We're having a party Thursday at our retail store. I, I would love to see everyone represented there to support your local business. Love to have each of you out. We're gonna be feeding folks from 11 to 2. We're gonna be grilling out hamburgers and hot dogs and giving away prizes, and we're gonna be signing people up. One of the reasons you may want to come Thursday is we got a special. If you come by Thursday and you sign up for 200, we'll give you gig free for three months. So, you'll, you'll pay the 300, or, excuse me, you'll pay the 200 price. What's that?
Don't get in my way.
Yeah. You'll pay the 200 price, but we'll give you the gig speed for three months. And probably hook a lot of you too, because you're gonna get used to that speed, and you're gonna probably keep it after three months, so. But we're excited about it. We got a lot of buzz. Folks we talked to today that, that bought gig were very excited, and we hope to, in the future, maybe edge out from where we're at. So, we've made this initial investment. We'll see how it goes. Hopefully, we'll be able to edge out, edge out in the future. We've got a lot of stuff planned for the county as well. Got some stuff out toward Lake Tillery that we want to do, so we're excited about investing big in Albemarle, and we know that it'll do very well.
Stacy, you got the gig, I know, pretty much inside the town limits, or not the entire city limits, the downtown.
That's right.
Then you got 200 a little beyond that. If we go out beyond 200, what speeds do you have?
Typically, our lunar sites, which are more kind of out in the county, I'd like to say, they, they offer 100 by 100 right now is typically what we can get inside those, those polygons. In the future, using vectoring, we hope to push that up to as high as 400 using newer technology. So, we have a lab in Little Rock that we are constantly tweaking and trying to get things as fast as we can get it. And so, we think that the lunar sites out in the county, at some point, we'll be able to push 400, 400 by 400 over those. So, excited about that. And, and you know, the FCC has declared that the new high speed is 25 by 3, and so, everything that we do, we have that in mind, no matter how far out. We're, we're trying to really make sure that everyone has access to high-speed internet. And, but right here in Albemarle, you folks are gonna be smoking, so.
Council, have any questions?
Yeah. Give us a general idea. I, I see in, in the fine print for the first 12 months. After that first 12 months, by how much of an increase are we looking at?
Eh, I mean.
On average?
I mean, it's hard to say. Typically, most companies are charging around 89 is what they're charging right now. Most of our folks in our space are charging about $89 for gig. So, you know, 66 for the first year.
Somewhere around.
The way I look at it though, and, and you guys know this, I mean, competition breeds competition, and, you know, you say 12 months, but, you know, competitiveness is gonna keep that price competitive. So, there's no monopolies anymore. Pretty much anybody can come, come in and do anything. So, you know, we, that's one of the reasons we've doubled down on Albemarle is we want, we want the city of Albemarle to, to have Windstream. And so, the competition we have in town, we want to be faster than they are, and we want to be very competitive on price. So, that's what's brought us to this point.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is your company gonna be around?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, a lot of folks have heard about the Chapter 11. We, we had a, a dispute with a, a very aggressive and what I would call predatory capital venture firm that, you know, called, kinda shorted our stock and forced us into a bad position. We, we lost a lawsuit that we thought we would win, and to the tune of about $310 million. So, we sought Chapter 11 protection. City group stepped in, looked at our operation, seen all of the good things that we have going, and they gave us a billion dollars and said, keep doing what you're doing. And so, we're doing what we're doing. I've not been told, if I didn't read it in the paper from where I sit, I wouldn't even know it, because we're still deploying fiber, we're still putting a lot of stuff out there. Matthews, Matthews is next. We're gonna put fiber in Matthews. We're doing Landrum, South Carolina. So, we have 30 cities in 16 states that we gotta get done this year. And so, we're, we're full steam ahead.
So, from the streets that you ran the fiber on here in city limits, now going directly to the houses, that fiber or coeds?
Fiber.
Fiber?
Yes, fiber. So, we built the core, and once we built the core, if, if people order their service, they'll pull it down the street. So, ideally, the last person on the street, that's who you want to sell, right? Because then, once you pull that fiber all the way to the end of the street, everybody else on the street can get it that much quicker. So, the initial build could take like 10 days. If the person on the end of the street bought it, it's like 10 days. Everybody else would be a quicker, hopefully a quicker due date, because we, we've got the fiber pulled down the individual street. So, it's down the main streets. It's called a success-based deployment. So, as people order it, we just pull it down there. It takes about 10 days on the, in the worst case, and, you know, sometimes inside of that, so. But it is fiber to the side of the house.
So, inside Albemarle, I can go down on the 18th, no matter where I live, and get a gig?
I wouldn't say that. I would say there's, there's little gaps here and there on the edges, and I can provide a map.
I'm not on the gig. I'm not on the gig. I'm right downtown.
Yeah. Well, you're lucky then, because you got it. So, and, but I can provide a map, or, or if you come on Thursday, we've got a map that we can show you every street it goes down. And I've actually got, on my computer, I have a system. I put your address in there. It tells me instantly if you're in, in or not. And so, there's gonna be a lot of folks. I think there's about 8,000 residents that are covered, so we should be pretty good.
What's the most speed you could put on the copper lines?
Uh, I would say, in an ideal situation, 400. I would say in a more likely situation, about 100, 100 by 100. And honestly, 100 by 100, for most folks, that's pretty good. That's for, especially that upload. See, it's all about the upload now. The way I look at it is, everybody has seen everything on the internet. Now, they want to put their stuff up there. So, it's about the upload now, so. That's becoming more and more of a thing, and gamers, they're gonna love this gig product. They're just gonna love it. So, if you got any gamers in the house. I'm thinking of one kid that I know from years ago when I was a scout leader, used to always talk about gaming and how he needed speed. He's, I'm gonna call him tomorrow, and I'm gonna say, he lives right here in Albemarle, and I'm gonna say, you got all the speed that you want. I'm gonna make his mom sign him up, so.
Further questions, council? Stacy, thank you very much.
I expect to see everybody on Thursday. 11 to 2 is when the food, but we're all day, 8:30 to 5:00. So, y'all come by. We have a big, big outing there, so we're gonna be making a lot of noise.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving into an, an announced delegations, the first one is Ms. Essence Price, 227 Leonard Avenue, to discuss a water leak adjustment. Counsel, you have a bill from Ms. Price on, at your desk, and what she is asking you for. Staff cannot grant this. It's outside of our policy. Only council can grant this. Go ahead, Ms. Price.
Um, I'm at 227 Leonard, and I, I recently had a leak that I didn't know about. I went downtown to Scott and talked to him. He told me that if I get my landlord out there to get a plumber, the quality, to say that it is a leak, it actually is a leak, he will be able to adjust the bill for me. Um, I got a paper from my landlord, from the plumber. I have the copy right here, but Scott said he was able to take that. It was, um, because it said a sink, it fixed the sink in the toilet. So, our second option was to come here, to see what could be done.
But before that, right there, she had me to go to Eric, and Eric had, did an inspection on the house in between his time. So, he had wrote the letter that, that he had, went through the inspection, and it was a water leak. He noticed it was a water leak, and the landlord had to fix it. I think he went back on the 3rd of April, or something like that, and had to do the inspection again, and the house cleared for inspection, and he, he put down that the leaks and everything had been fixed.
They have been repaired.
Yes.
So, this is a Section 8 house, right?
Yes.
So, it looks like to me there were two things that, that they talked about, that the plumber talked about. One was toilet, and one was the kitchen, right?
Yeah, a sink.
Right. But the, but Section 8, if I understand it, somebody help me. They may, they have certain high standards for which that house has got to be. Isn't that right?
Yes.
As I'm looking back to the back row back there. High standards that they need, thank you.
So, both these documents are the same one? One's 227 Leonard, and the other's 229?
That's a good catch.
There's two, I see 228 and 229 on there.
I think that's just a typo.
What kind of leak would, would yield this much water?
227.
Because we, we've had, the ones we've had before have been outside, pipes leaking in the yard or something like that. I, I don't remember anything like this inside the house. Where would it be leaking in the house?
Toilet.
The toilet kept running was one of the issues, and I just told my landlord what it could have been. I, I didn't know for sure. Uh, he had him come while I wasn't there, I was at work. Uh, he wrote me this invoice of what was done, so I don't know if they actually, I know that Eric came and did the inspection and said it was a leak, and then he came back and said it wasn't a leak. So, I don't know if the inspection included the pipes or all that, but he.
How long has this been going on?
This, this month.
Looks like it was, replaced a part in the toilet and fixed a sprayer line under the sink. There's two things they fixed.
That's right.
And it does carry over for more than just one month, so.
Could you hear the toilet running?
No. I didn't know that nothing was running or anything under the sink. He figured the sink out himself, the landlord. I didn't know nothing about that.
So, what are we asking for specifically?
Adjustment to the bill.
I understand that, but do you have an amount that you would like to be adjusted?
Well, I don't, I don't know how y'all, how y'all do that or anything, but I just knew it would, it would help me. It went from paying 3 something to 7 something, like almost $700.
Are you asking for what, counsel, what staff would normally do if it was inside of their purview?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, then what you would be looking at is half of the water bill. Now, counsel, staff would not normally do the sewer bill because we did have to treat the sewer.
Right.
Uh, it's totally up, counsel, what you want to do. You'd be looking at half of, at least one or two, totally your choice, but for two months also.
Talking about half of the 215, 13?
Yes. Well, plus that extra month. There's some on another month too that we do not have in front of us. If we grant, if we do it, we'll say what the amount is. Count, staff will actually calculate it, whatever counsel wishes to do.
So, half of the 215, and half of the month that has, that the numbers are not in front of us.
Counsel does 50% of the water. Staff, uh, staff will calculate it and get the numbers to her.
So, the bill that we have in front of us, though, is $909. We have no idea what the next one's gonna be, or what the other one affected will be. Is that correct?
Was it the previous month?
Are you talking about a future month?
I'm talking about that other month that we don't have the amount in front of us. So, that's what I'm saying.
So, counsel, that's what the mayor was saying. If council will set the, what they want the policy to be applied here, 50% of the overage, or, we will make that calculation. But, no, usually, in a situation where it would be eligible, it would only be one month anyway. So, going two months just kinda goes beyond that, and we don't have that information, or, or beyond, you know, three months back.
And the reason I made that indication is to say she'd have some idea what we're talking about money-wise, because we're saying half of 215, well, that's just 107, okay? And that other month, we would, don't necessarily know. But due $919.
And that was due yesterday.
Yep, that's right.
Well, repair was made on April 5th. Statement cut off on the 15th, 14th.
Due date.
So, I know that the repair was made before the statement cuts off, so it shouldn't be after the statement. It should have been on the previous, right? If it had been leaking from mine.
But we're, we're only adjusting the, the water policy.
Right.
That's typically what policy is, unless council wants to do something different.
And so, everything is repaired now, correct?
Yes, everything's repaired, and according to gentleman, Eric has already made his inspection.
I put it in the form of motion that we adjust the water rate 50% for the bill that's before us, and then let staff adjust the next bill.
At 50%?
At 50%.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
And now, sidebar, we, it was due today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Is there, what's?
Ma'am, have you already used all your extensions?
Yes.
We, when a bill is due and somebody is, is making an appeal, we allow it to continue on through that, that process, so, you know, so for example, if the bill was due today, it's not gonna get cut off tomorrow, because this is in process, so.
It, I think it's about 10 days after the, the due date.
Okay.
She's gonna have a month.
No.
Is that right?
10 days, I think we're thinking.
10 days is an extension we usually give, but if council wants to do anything different, you need to let us know.
This is a pretty big bill. Let's give her 30 days.
Well, and question, do you still have that balance forward? Have you still got that $250 out there that you've not paid yet?
No, that's paid, obviously.
That's paid.
That's paid.
So, right now, you're just at that 672.
The bill was actually.
672. Okay, that's better than it was. Okay, that's good. That's good.
Mr. Bramble, is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble, second by Councilmember Lauder, to give her 30 days from today to pay these bills. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under unannounced delegations, we have with us tonight Glenn Skip Smallwood, Jr. He is volunteering some time for us, and I'm gonna let Mr. Ferris introduce him to you. Mark, you want to come up with him?
And while they're coming up, let's say a couple of quick things. Uh, Mr. Smallwood is working with the city through the International Economic Development Council and the U.S. Economic Development Administration, and he's here through them to help evaluate the impact of flooding that we have in town. I think maybe the recent storms, named Storms Michael and Florence, have brought it to attention, but as we know, when we have flooding, it occurs along the creek, and that's a significant business and travel corridor for us, that has a lot of impact on our economics. So, Mr. Smallwood has a background in economic development and engineering, and he is in town today looking at some of the more obvious creeks, streams, drainage basins, and, and we've been sharing today at staff level what we've observed over many years, and also been sharing today at staff level what we've observed over many years and also some areas that do flood that aren't necessarily blue lines on maps, they're just drainage basins, not necessarily creeks or streams, but when we have a lot of rain, you know, they are overwhelmed and inundated with water. So flooding is flooding, whether it's a blue line on a map or not, and so he is here today helping us out with some of that.
Let me just say a few words. Yeah, basically just, I don't know how much you've been told, there, the Economic Development Administration provides grants to organizations to do various things and so the IEDC, which is the Economic, International Economic Development Council, received an EDA grant. So when the call came out to ask for volunteers to take on this project, I was called, I think partly because I have the engineering background and I have to admit, I'm not a water guy, I'm an, I'm industrial engineer, but it is, it is something that kinda falls into as far as addressing, you know, potential, you know, what are the problems, what are some potential solutions and try to map out, you know, what would be a strategy to start addressing some of these issues. So what I've been basically doing today and for the rest of the week till Thursday is I'll be here asking lots of questions, trying to learn as much as I can. In fact, I've been reviewing a previous study that was conducted, I believe, back in 1998. It was done by a consulting engineering firm. So I can kinda get a feel for what has been done up to this point and then what I will do with some of the fact finding, I'll go back and then I'll put together a report with some recommendations that you then might wanna consider following up on. But really what I'm doing this week is trying to learn as much as I can about the severity of the situation, how many businesses are impacted, how it impacts the businesses economically, how it affects the community and then maybe look at some, some things that might have been looked at or may have not been looked at that you might wanna consider, especially with flood management and so forth. So that, that's my task and like I said, I'll be here this week and then when I'm done, I'll go back and start compiling all my notes and prepare a report for you then.
How difficult is it to get a perennial stream, that declaration removed?
That's a good question because just to give you a side note, I live in a little town called Cape Girardeau, Missouri. And if you don't know where Cape Girardeau is, we're located midway between St. Louis and Memphis and naturally we're located on the Mississippi River, which means we get flooding too. And that's been a common question that's come up. I think we have generally found FEMA is, is generally interested in working with their communities and especially if you wanna get a zone changed or you wanna get some of the, you know, because he always has to constantly update your mapping. But, you know, they'll sit and listen and if you've got arguments or good points, you know, I think that they'll consider it, but it really just comes down to doing the good mitigation on your side and to prove your point and have the data or the information to back it up to get it changed. So, and I understand not all the communities in a hundred-year floodplain and that's something I wanna look at is to make sure I'm very clear on where is the hundred-year versus where it's not. So, and then of course I'm looking at the flood insurance also. In fact, I was a little surprised when I found out today, only 35 residences slash businesses actually have flood insurance. So I was a little, somewhat a little surprised to learn that because I figured it'd be in the hundreds considering, you know, some of the flooding that has occurred in the community. So, and that's one of the things on my bucket list to kinda look at, you know, what are, you know, how much awareness is in the community about what can be done, you know, for flooding and so forth.
If we had land that's designated to flood, have all of them gotten insurance?
Uh, I don't know. Right now, I do not have the names of the businesses. I just know right now I've been given a number of about 35, which I consider that to be a pretty low number. So I, like I said, I expect that'd be a little higher, especially when you had businesses that have constantly had flooding. I'm sure you've received a lot of complaints and people have come and voiced their concerns about what are you gonna do to resolve? I don't know if they're on that list or not. That's, that's something I think we're trying to find out while I'm here this week is who are these individuals that actually have the flood insurance. Believe it or not, even in the town I live in, I'm not in a flood zone, however, I, for whatever reason, maybe I shouldn't say this publicly because now FEMA will probably take it away from me, but I actually have flood insurance. I decided to get it just to be on the safe side and I qualified. I was, took a risk, thought, well, what the heck? And they did say, yeah, you, you're entitled to it. So I took it. Probably the only one in my whole block just got it, so.
Thank you. I must be the devil in the detail because this is not on the agenda tonight. How did we get you, and I hear the word volunteer, but then I hear the word, somebody, listen, ain't nothing free. And so I wanted, so how did you end up here?
This, this is paid for by the EDA.
Okay.
So IEDC through her gained relief. So they actually go around, it's actually on the economic development side, they obtain monies or grants from the Economic Development Administration on the federal side. That money is made available to go in and assist communities, primarily was on the Gulf Coast, but also here in North Carolina since you were hit as well, to address what can be done on the economic development side to begin to address as far as flooding and so forth. The call was made tomorrow by one of the ID staff members. Are you interested in potentially participating in this program? If so, we have monies available. You're not paying me anything.
Gotcha. And that's where I am so fiscally tight about something like that.
Right.
And then I heard the word volunteer and I'm thinking, whoa, whoa, whoa. He's from Missouri, even though that's a show-me state, I mean, he's not gonna show up here to volunteer. That's good.
Right.
Second thing, when did you know you were coming here?
Uh, about two months ago.
Okay.
Did alphabetical order have anything to do?
No. No, it was a long process because to be honest with you, when I got the phone call, I had a thousand questions.
I understand.
Okay, you know, hey, I'm not a water guy, I'm not a civil engineer, tell me again, what's the situation and so forth. So I had to flush it out on my end to make sure it was clear on exactly what my mission was. And so that's what we actually did this morning with several of the staff members, with city manager, we actually talked about a lot of different things and we've actually kinda mapped out what I consider a workable plan as far as some items that I need to start looking at. And there's some other things and I'm making some general inquiries. I have some contacts to see, okay, I've run into this, I've noticed this, are these things been looked at and so forth? So I'm kinda doing a little digging on my own end. That's why I was very interested in the 1998 study because there was very specific items that were addressed in that study and that's why I wanna see, well, what follow-up was made after that study. But I am, I'm strictly volunteer, just because I'm from Missouri, we're, we're nice people.
No, I know you are, I've been there. But someone that's come.
Even though we're a little slow, but, but no, I, I'm strictly just a volunteer because you're not gonna get a bill from me, you know, it's all covered by the EDA.
I just would say to my fellow council members up here, once we find out the list, the bucket list or the stab list or the whatever list, that makes us very, 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 very liable for fixing things, okay? The liability kicks up once somebody's told us that, particularly when the EDA's been there.
Whatever you can do to help, we appreciate it.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Keep in mind, these are recommendations.
Gotcha.
I'm not in here gonna pound my fist and say you have to do these things, these are just recommendations.
Gotcha.
Based on a third eye, set of eyes coming in, looking at it. So I understand your questions, I appreciate it.
She's right about this.
Yeah. I'm, I'm very aware of that because one of the concerns I've got, I don't wanna go in when I'm talking to the stakeholders or some businesses, I don't wanna raise their level of expectation, you know, that I'm Superman and I've got this, you know, I've got all these solutions here. No, that's, I'm just here to do fact finding and put a report together because I'll have to flush this also through IEDC to say, there's my report, you're in agreement, and then submit it with Mark, I'll probably go over with him and then it'd basically be your recommendation. Keep in mind, you've had a, you've actually had a study done by USDA.
Years ago.
Yeah, years ago, which I have not seen, we're looking for that. And then there was a follow-up study by a consulting engineering firm back in 98 and I have a copy of that.
Thanks.
So, and I'm, by the way, I'm not here to re-engineer the water system or drainage systems or anything like that as the, trust me, you don't want me to do that, so. Electric questions, I can address all those, but not on water.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate the assistance.
Thank you.
Administrative reports or monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? We've been on the unfinished business, consider the method of nonpartisan election. This has been on the agenda a couple meetings now and if council wants to give us any direction, council staff will know how to draw the resolution and bring back to council. What is your thoughts?
I would place on the table a motion because of what we've seen, what we've, the ma, your comment from Bob Joyce, from what we had prior to last meeting, that we move forward with the plurality method.
Motion by council member Hall.
Second.
And second by council member Hughes, that we move forward with the plurality method. Council, that motion would be only to allow us to draw the resolution and get comments from the Board of Election and then bring it back to council for approval before we set, see if you have any comments on it, before we set a public hearing. Further comments?
I, I will vote to do that, but I'm not, I'm not sold on the plurality method. I definitely think it ought to, but somewhere along the line, one should have a majority to vote.
I'll just throw in my two cents also, I thought a lot in past several meetings when we got these different methods and, you know, to me, the purpose in going nonpartisan is to be as non-political or de-politicized as possible. And it just kind of came to me that it seemed like the least political way of doing it was to do it by plurality. You don't get tied up in the primaries, you don't have to file almost a year ahead of your, your election, plus 90% of the other cities already do it that way and it seems, you know, it seems to work fine, so.
Me personally, if I had my option, I would go with the runoff election method. I just believe that every candidate that's on a ballot, if you fall within a certain percentage, you should reserve that right to have a runoff, you know, if it's a very, very close election and possible, suspect of some sort of faulty, faulty dealings or whatever, you know, miscounts or ineligible voters or things of that nature. I think that anytime you run into situations like that, you should always have that, reserve that right to have, call for a runoff election. That's why I would, I would prefer to support the runoff election method.
Further discussion?
As I understand it, with the motion, with the motion on the table, this just gets us started, gets us to the Board of Elections.
We withdraw a resolution and take it before the Board of Elections for comments before we come back to council to look at that resolution and then set a public hearing.
Right. So this gets us moving and, and that doesn't necessarily mean, if I understand it, we can change our mind at any time until, until it is actually in writing. Would that not?
The council has a right to change their mind anytime.
So let's move forward with what we can.
Further comments?
So the motion on the table is for the plurality, correct?
Sure. Motion on table is for plurality. All those in favor, raise your hand please. All those opposed? Four, three. Staff will put something together and we'll send it to the Board of Elections and bring it back when we have that available. New business number 12, consider proclamation to stamp out hunger through drive.
Um, it is in, within the body of your agenda package. This is something that is done annually by the Community Christian Ministry. They call and ask if I would make sure it got on there and make sure it got signed, so there it is before you and it is the Saturday before Mother's Day. Just put your bags of groceries out at your mailbox and they'll pick it up. Move approval.
Motion by council member Hall.
Second.
Second by council member Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, consider proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. Council member, we have done this for several years now.
Move approval.
Motion by council member Hall to approve. Who votes the second?
Well.
Second by council member Louder. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And this, and have you any idea, will it be at noon time at?
It occurs at 12 o'clock at Courthouse Square Park. Number 14, consider ordinance 1914 to allocate insurance proceeds for vehicle repairs.
Move approval.
Motion by council member Hall. Second by council member Bramble. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, is a reminder that the city offices will be closed on Friday, April 19th for Good Friday. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
Just two quick items. One, I wanna report that the first part of Phase 3 INI, which is Inflow and Interfiltration Sewer Project, has begun. If you remember, staff came to council a couple of meetings ago regarding about 700 feet of line within the sewer plant property that staff, our sewer system staff was going to do, so we got the materials in and that portion of Phase 3 INI has started, so we hope to have that line, 700 feet, completely replaced by Thursday. And then a week from today, we hope to start the Snugs Park Water Lo, Water, Snugs Park Road Water Line Extension. That's the section that we had some residents come talk to us about, maybe right before the holidays and to avoid the assessment process, they paid in advance, but we've received approval from the state, so that work on that water line extension will start Monday.
And that approval just came in today. Took a while to get it.
That's it.
Mr. Townsend?
I'll just say, on behalf of the friends of the Waddell Center, I wanna thank everybody that did come out or even had intentions of coming out this past, this past Saturday. The weather did not cooperate with us, but yet and still, when it's all said and done, you know, we still had a good time and I would still deem it a successful event considering the circumstances. So I do appreciate everybody's thoughts as well as their support.
And although it was only a few cookers, it was very good.
I'm glad you enjoyed it, thank you. And also just pretty much to the listening audience, as a reminder, over the next two weeks, well, actually April 13th through 27th, if I'm not mistaken, there is a community cleanup going on, there is no formal day of everybody just gathering and picking up trash. So whether you're listening to this and you have a youth group or family or you as an individual or church group or whatever the case may be, we encourage you to actually stop by the Waddell Center, grab you some orange trash bags, pick a street and pick up the trash. The dumpsters are already located on site. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend, is a dumpster in place?
Yes, the dumpsters are already on site.
Okay. Ms. Hughes?
Um, I would just like to, a couple of things. I would like to comment, Ms. Chaney, on the details in her HR report. I'm all about details and I, I like the way you're presenting your report. Also, some of us made it to the 1776 production Tuesday night last week and I have to say, I've been to some productions in Charlotte at the Bloomingville and this was very, very similar to something you would see in Charlotte, most impressive. So for those who made it, great, for those who didn't, their, their loss. Also, the Stanley County Jazz Band is a jewel in our community and I don't know if people know necessarily, this is a group of students from Albemarle West and South Stanley High Schools and they are dedicated, they practice on Friday afternoons. They played last Thursday at the Central School Auditorium and it was phenomenal. It's just hard to believe that these are kids in high school playing this kinda music. Wonderful. They're supposed to be, I think, tentatively gonna play Thursday down maybe at the square.
Courthouse Square.
Courthouse Square. So if you have any way possible to come, they played for about 30, 35 minutes, but I mean, it's spectacular, it's just awesome. So we have a lot of arts, as we have talked about before, and Martha Sue and I have talked about this, we've, we've got to do better as a community to come up with some form of calendar or something that people, because I talked to a lot of people and they're like, oh, I didn't know, I didn't know. And I'm like, we gotta do a better job of.
Advertising.
Advertising and, and getting people, because that 1776, I mean, that was.
And while you're on that, let's talk a little bit about that. 1776 is actually a play that tells you about the, the signing and how they arrived at the Declaration of Independence and we will be receiving, don't know the exact location yet, it'll be somewhere in the downtown area, a replica of the Declaration of Independence to be placed. We're looking at either City Hall or Courthouse Square Park, we're looking at a couple of different places and we'll make a decision on where it's gonna be, but it'll be about six probably monuments, just of a replica of what you see in Washington. And they're doing this in all of the 100 counties in the state over time. We will receive it free of charge. So we hope to put it here where, when people come to look at the museum, they'll also wanna look at that and it'll draw field trips from all of our schools to come in during the year. We should be hearing in the next 45 days or so where it's gonna be and then we'll move forward then with construction.
Who, who will decide where it's gonna be?
We, we will make a recommendation to the gentleman that will be supplying it to us. He has ultimate say.
Yes, he has the ultimate.
But he will also send an architect in and look at a couple of locations and see what looks the best too. He has ultimate say, but us and the county commissioners will make a recommendation to him. Astralis?
All right. Speaking of arts and music, I heard today that Albemarle native Josh Baldwin has been nominated for several awards through K-Love Radio, so just wanna extend congratulations to Josh, he's doing a phenomenal job. And also just, I may have mentioned last meeting about the car break-ins, people going out in the community, rummaging through garages, cars, things of that nature, just wanna make Just want to make this, just want to remind citizens to lock your corridors at night, even in the daytime, make sure your garages are kept locked up, and things of that nature. As, as the weather gets warmer, I think we have a little, a little bit of an uptick in, in these type of crimes, so just want, don't, don't want anybody to fall victim to that. So, other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
Some people have taken my thunder, but it's okay. 1776 was wonderful. There were almost 1,000 students between the two days on Monday and Tuesday, who were presented the opportunity to come see the show. To echo things that Martha and the mayor have mentioned, 1776, it's my understanding, has only been brought to one or two other communities, the play itself. The organization, Foundations of Freedom, have, have given the documents to about 12 communities in North Carolina, I think the number is. They have not done, until last week's presentation, both the play and the gifting, as they call it, at the same time to the same organization. So, we were guinea pigs to a certain extent, but I will tell you that Andrew Young, who is the facilitator for this whole process, Andrew was thrilled with the facility out there, and he is really hoping to come back to echo Martha on something you said. Yes, we do need some central calendaring, if you will, and I have mentioned that to the Arts Council, and I think that, that's something that folks, anybody in the arts community, or in the, that have a venue like we've got, we've got to come together. I don't know if that has happened yet or not, but I'm hoping that, that will continue to occur. My hope is, is that they will make this an annual visit, because for so many, not just students, but people, they will never get to DC to see this, and never really understand what happened to, to gain our freedom, so. Sad to say, I heard last week that we've got two businesses closing in Albemarle, one closing and one moving. The one closing is Highlights, and that breaks my heart, and my, I know that they're trying, trying to work on something there. But the other thing was, it was last night, my grandson is in town, and last night, we went to Sweet Frog's, and there's this note on the door that says, "We are closing." But then underneath it, it says, "Only for a couple of weeks, we're moving down the same area, just two or three doors down." But I was glad we went last night, because that's one of my grandson's very favorite things to do, and he's in town, is to go to Sweet Frog's, so that place was closing. And I guess, I just want to ask Ross, how did Saturday go with the, I call it the take-back out at the Ag Center? Do you have any indication how that went?
From everything I've heard, it was a success.
Very, well, you know.
I can tell, I can attest.
That it was.
Having sat in line for an hour.
Good.
To get rid of my paint.
Good.
It was a huge success.
Even with the rain, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Ms. Twitt?
I wanted to also mention the jazz band in the, over here in the square on Thursday afternoon, 4:00, I believe. And also, wanted to congratulate Dexter on the, on Saturday. You know, I finally got to make one of those things, and it rained, so, but the food was still great, and I guess, to our benefit, it wasn't crowded, but I wish, I wish, I wish it had been. The only other question, I'll just throw this in, legislative breakfast next month? Do we need to?
We need to do that.
Do our own reservations, do we need to, how do we do that?
Staff will do it. Hold hands up whoever's going to go to legislative breakfast.
The 13th, isn't it, May 13th?
It's on a Monday.
Monday at 7:30 AM.
We better check the date, but I think it's the 13th. Somebody, we ought to.
And when do we go to Hickory?
The 14th.
14th.
Oh, okay.
I think that it's the 13th, it's on the Chamber of Commerce website.
I put it on.
Everybody, anybody going?
Breakfast.
One, three, four, five. Everybody looked like, other than Ms. Townsend and Mr., Ms. Lauder.
Is that the hospital?
Yes. Further? That's it. Mr. Bramlett?
The Convention and Visitors Bureau used to have, claimed to have, charge of the community calendar. I have no idea what happened to it, but for some period of time, they at least laid claim to it, and, and they just apparently just dropped it. And I don't know where the best location would be for that. It must be one that would include the county as a whole.
Yeah.
And not just, not just the city. So, if we're going to play a role, then, then we need to look at it in, in terms of that sort of thing. I want to back up Dexter on the trash pickup. I, I don't know how organized we are in total, but we, we need to, as much as city council can do, let's, let's work within our communities and that sort of thing, and see if we can't, can't get some trash picked up on those days. You know how bad it is here, and at least for a short period of time, we can make a difference. And while you're doing it, think in terms of how we can extend this beyond this short period of time, to where we can get some routine trash pickups to keep our town looking better. Downtown is trash-free, essentially. I, I guess it's the, the, the street sweepers and that sort of thing, but downtown looks good, but the minute you get outside the, the central business district, we, we're looking, we're looking pretty bad. So, see if we can extend that beyond, you get your bags from Ross.
At the YWDL Center.
Ross drops, Ross took some to the YWDL Center.
Yeah.
We also have some to see where.
Yeah.
Ms. Lauder? Ms. Lauder?
Oh, I was taking a nap. I heard the same thing. I've heard from the beginning of this political and non-political, we need, need to just reduce it to the Roseberry Club, or whatever name we have, because the city council doesn't sound like a name of people that are non-political. And the ones that have not changed are the places like Raleigh, and Charlotte, and Greensboro, and Winston-Salem, and those few. Now, there are some of us that are very political, some of us that, that they flip a coin, some of us that, that don't want a D beside their name in the presidential election. But it's not for the good of the people in Stanley County that we're doing this. Never has been passed before, and it just took a group of people that, if they're Democrats, they won't be Republicans, and if they're Republicans, they're Republicans, Democrats, and, oh, may even have somebody here that doesn't know what they are. But we are the people that have chosen to run the city of Albemarle. And are we still going to be called city council, or city rosebuds, or city whatever? Are we going to change our names to go along with our openness? What, what is the result of this, other than a, a big political thing that you don't want to have a D in front of your name when you run again? What is it?
I assume that's a rhetorical question.
I think it is.
It's not any like you do. Let's, let's just admit what it is, and go ahead and, and do whatever the, is wanted. I think we've decided that from the beginning, it was brought up, even got the, the person that goes to Raleigh, to our General Assembly, before he even got elected, got him working in Raleigh to get that. Then he found out he couldn't do that, and, and backed out, but that didn't do anything for us. The one that we've elected to go to the General Assembly, we don't think he knows what he's doing. So, let's do as little more as we can. There's no reason to drag it out. It's been dragged out from the very day it was mentioned by one or two people, and went out and campaigned. That's before I was even here, so I knew about that. Let's just go ahead and do what you want to do. It's four-three, it's not going to ever change. And why are we going to so much trouble to keep on dragging it out? What do we have to do?
We're following the law.
Oh, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience have anything to bring for council? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion we go into closed session pursuant to the Georgia Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, 5, and 6, to consult with attorney, real estate negotiations, and personnel.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.